I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the members shall all the board members have present, actually as approval the minutes of the regular meeting of May 1st, and any motion please?
T. Police will make the motion.
Questions or comments? On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Um, comments of all education members, superintendents, um, Mr. um, Carney?
Welcome to spring fight. It's alright.
Nothing. Nothing at this time.
I just wanted to say, uh, I had some ice here, and I'm wearing these ridiculous sunglasses in here. I don't mean to be disrespectful, that's why I have mine. The lights are killing. That's all I have.
Mr. Mark?
Congratulations to all these students of their, uh, this is an honor that you, uh, will enjoy with your families tonight. Uh, your relatives that are here, uh, are gonna cheer up to memories that they have. We have two more meetings tonight. Uh, we are required to have two. There is an election for ISB board members, that's at the intermediate school district. And at the first meeting, which is only one item on the agenda, this board of education has to decide who is gonna be the delegate that goes out to the ISB and votes for the candidates that are on the ballot. This'll take about two, three, four minutes the most, and after that, we have the regular meeting where we will be honoring all of you students tonight. Congratulations again.
Mr. Mark?
Yeah! (applause)
Not at this time.
Okay, Miss Diane?
Not at this time.
Pete?
Great to see a full house for a leadership night, and happy to be here.
Mr. Denny?
Welcome, everyone.
Still, I feel like we're at the last table or something, at some of our selections. Next is the public hearing. Is anyone from the public push to be heard at this time? There's an extra between public hearing and the end of this session. No public hearing? Now is the discussion and the action to adopt the resolution to consider the designation of the electoral representative representative for the June 5th, 2017, M.I.S.D. by annual election meeting. And we'd like to have, um, someone that's able to go, the voting is between 4 and 7. I know it's a bad time, I don't get the traffic going out of Garfield, it's crazy at that time of the night, so if anyone, um, can go, it's great, great to go, so great to be the, um, first, and then who's the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Okay. Um, favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So that's all that's on the agenda. Public hearing again, is there anyone from the public push to say anything? Public hearing is closed. Comments we already went to, if anybody else need to say now? I just wanna comment on the lip dub, that was Anthony Hobbit, I wanna tell ya, that was awesome.
Yeah, she's here.
Everybody, I'll be there. (applause) I've always been able to do that for a very long time, you see him on Facebook, other kids do it, and I knew our kids could do it, and they had the spirit, and I was told they did it in two takes within an hour, didn't work the whole day or morning, and I just think it showed quite the spirit, and really advertised our schools, and that's what we wanted to do, so congratulations to Anthony and the staff, kids too. So, that's it. (applause) So now we'll take the adjournment for this meeting, so I must, motion to adjourn?
T. Police will make that motion to adjourn.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So that ends that meeting, thank you very much. Looks like everybody's probably in here already, so gotta look for a late start for this one, so we're gonna start this meeting right again. I'm gonna skip the pledge, we just did it, and... So right now we have the, um, I wanna open the meeting on the regular, now the regular meeting of May 15th, and, um, now I'm going to have the first thing on the agenda, the second being the Roseville High School top 10 students. So we're gonna put it on to Mr. Blaskowski, and Mr. um, Atkins, Adams, I mean Atkins, Adams, any of the principals that wanna come up here, we'd love to have you up here, if you're here. (inaudible)
Good evening, everybody.
(laughing)
It's gonna be the lip dub next. The tall and the short of it, man. Uh, tonight we, we're gonna start off with our top 10 students, and Mr. Adams will, uh, call your name and ask you to come on up here, and you'll receive a certificate, and, uh, which Ms. Janay will hand to you. Congratulations to all of you, and I'll hand it off to Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Blaskowski, right here.
Oh, good.
And Ms. Gabriel, and Mr. Chef.
Yeah, come on.
Just a word about the top 10 students, uh, these are the students that set the bar for Roseville High School. They're the ones that have put the hard work in and made us all proud, and for their efforts, uh, they've given Roseville High School, uh, something to be proud of, and will be successful as they go on to the next phase in their life. Our valedictorian is Miriam Aloko. Miriam, could you please come up here? (applause) Our salutatorian for this year is Autumn Van Damme. Autumn? (applause) Rounding out the top 10, and if I could have these students please come forward as well, Tyler Atkinson. And Raven Newberry. Top 10, we are very proud of your accomplishments, thank you for all you've done for Roseville High School and for yourselves, good luck in the future. Thank you. Next, if I could have our yearbook sponsor, Ms. Michelle Hayward come forward.
Alright, I gotta get my list here. Alright, um, let's see here, um, I have my editors, uh, Jackie Willis, wanna? So Tommy is the academics editor, and, uh, Jamie and Kylie and Jackie are the editors. And, let's see, Lauren Finn, she's my business manager. Kaitlin Kotalinsky is the clubs editor. Rayanne McGee is the people section editor. Chloe Vincent, sports editor. And Kalen Brockman is the student life editor. Some of them have games and work and all kinds of things, 'cause these are the people who are involved in everything. Um, I just wanna take a moment to, um, let you know that these are some of the most hard working individuals that I have ever come across with in the last several years. Um, they just step it up and do anything I ask them to do, and I just, I love you guys, and you're awesome, and I'm just so missed, your seniors back here, but I still, I still have a couple juniors here, it's good. So anyway, they round, a big round of applause, the yearbook is off this year, so...
Congratulations, congratulations. Yeah, you guys can go ahead to the stage left. Thank you, Ms. Hayward. Next, sponsor of our anime club, Ms. Rossen. And if Ms. Rossen is not here, I will be presenting that. The anime club president is Faith Hall. Faith, are you here? And Secretary, Jalen Brooks. Now, I know the anime club meets after school, I was wondering if either Faith or Jalen wanna say a few words about what happens after school in the anime club?
So, in anime club, um, wow, we have a lot going on in there. Uh, well, one of the main things is, um, we, it's kinda like we put everything that is anime and try stuff into the club, so we try to do some drawing, watch some episodes. Um, Faith, you had a lot of giveaways, you had raffle, and all kinds of stuff going on. We try to, um, participate in some of the Comic Cons and Anime Cons and all over, all over the place, and if you wanna talk about more, you can.
Thank you. Um, I personally feel like it was more than just a club for, like, animation, it was for all of us to become friends and for everybody to have a place to go if they needed somebody to talk to, and, uh, they really meant a lot to me, and they really changed my senior year, so I wanna say thank you to all of them, and Miriam, I'm so proud of you.
That's a wonderful thing, and a great thing about Roseville High School, she said it better than I said it, so thank you for being involved, and thank you for what you did for your friends in the club. And now, our sponsor for the drama club, the infamous, Ms. Angela Houghton. Ms. Dubb.
It seems, I feel when I talk about Roseville, I cry, so I am just very proud of everybody, and I feel so grateful regarding the lip dub, which completely, the new principal, Mr. Pat Adams, believed in me and in the school, and he knew we could do it, and, and we did it, and it wasn't just me at all, I mean, Ms. Hayward really had a heavy hand in helping, and alumni student John Mitchell, he did a great job, um, filming it and editing it, Joe Janay, there's so many people that were involved, and then all the students, they bought into it, they were excited, they were happy to be there, and, um, that goes, that speaks volumes to our leaders, which is who we're here to speak about today, um, the drama leaders, can you guys come forward, those of you that are here? Bring 'em up, we'll see who's up here, we'll give 'em some stage time, they like the stage time. These students were a part of Grease the Musical last year, they were all-stars, and we had a production, Charlotte's Web, this year, and they just, they're so amazing, they're involved in everything, they're smart, they're hardworking, and they have great attitudes, and I'm very proud of everybody. So here we have Sam Averitt. Rory Flanagan. And Sierra Dishman. Two are seniors, and we're really gonna, no, one, only one senior. Poor, oh, Sierra, I'm gonna miss her, she's like my, my right-hand man, my left-hand man, what is it, right or left? She's both, she's both of my hands. No, she's great, and I, I look forward, we have big plans for next year, we've already been talking about it, so you'll, you'll have to wait and see. So thank you all, congratulations.
I didn't cry, but I was...
The next group of students that we will honor is our French club, uh, Ms. Amy Bujouac would not make it tonight, so I will be in her stand-in. So why don't we have Tyler Atkinson, the co-president, come up, Tyler? Joe Schmidt, the other co-president, Joe? Tiffany Marinou, the vice president. Justin Atkinson, secretary. Thomas Rinke, college day coordinator. And Ashley Wyble, the historian. Now, Tyler as co-president, would you like to say a few words? No? Joe, would you like to say a few words?
So I, I won this job, you know, fair, I guess, but, uh, in French club, you know, we just try to have a lot of fun. Ms. Bujouac's a really great teacher, she couldn't be here, 'cause she had, her son had her own ceremony going on at his school, so, but, uh, yeah, everybody here, we all have jobs, or we have extra clubs, and we all love to be involved, so it's great when everybody can come out and participate in French club, and, uh, we try to, you know, have as much fun as possible.
Thank you, Joe. For the hardest working clubs in the school, I know that, alright? Great job, thank you. Mr. Cheshire, for marching band, Mr. Cheshire is here? Uh-oh, somebody gave me a microphone. I am, uh, very overjoyed to be introducing these fine young people for the marching band. Rebecca Budd, percussion section leader. Audrey Harrington, clarinet section leader. Madison Kurtz, drum major. Christian Oakley, low brass and reed section leader. Rachel Orler, field commander. Brooke Puckett, flute section leader. Jada Simmons, color guard captain. Cheyenne Stanley, color guard captain. Autumn Van Damme, alto saxophone section leader. Derek Van Way, percussion section leader. And Victor Vasquez, trombone section leader. I have just been floored by the commitment and dedication of these fine young people up on stage here. The marching band is the, is the heart of the band program here at Roseville High School, they do the most performing, and then the members from that marching band are the leaders and the rest of the bands, the jazz band, the symphonic band, the varsity band, the freshman band, and, uh, these outstanding young people earned a first division at marching band festival, earned a first division at district band and orchestra festival, and then for the first time in about 15 years at Roseville High School, earned a first division rating at state band and orchestra festival, so these... I just can't put into words how proud I am of them, and what a joy it is to work with them every day. Great job, guys. Next up, I would ask Ms. Drewan, our newspaper advisor, to come on up and introduce her crew.
Good evening, everyone. I think I have six here, but I'm gonna go ahead and call everybody's name anyway, first for recognition purposes, and maybe they'll pop in, we'll see, but I'm gonna start with, um, Tony Dombrowski, editor in chief. Sarah Allen, our managing editor. Tyler Atkinson, our copy chief. Rokaya Oday, one of our other copy editors. Emily, am I moving now? Emily Sorin, another one of our copy editors. Alex Terry Martin, another copy editor. Andrew Urbanczek, our photo designer and also our web editor. Carly Obrecht, our section editor. Alex Gonzalez, sports editor in full effect baseball gear. Joe Schmidt, sports editor. And finally, Jalissa Longjali, our business manager. I guess quickly, I just wanna say that I, I was thinking on the way over that this is my 17th year doing the Panther Pro, and I was, excuse me, I get a little choked up. And every year, obviously, comes with this new challenges. Journalism is a crazy business, whether you're doing it in school or whether you're doing it professionally, and these guys have always rolled with the punches, you know, print journalism isn't what it used to be, social media has pretty much taken over, and we've adapted, and we've done some really cool stuff with the web, and we're on Twitter all the time, so, Pprol.com, follow us. And I just, um, I wanna thank them. Thank them for making my job a lot easier, um, for being just a really cool crew to be around, and just being so darn smart, I really appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Drewan. Our next group to honor is National Honor Society, and I don't believe our, um, advisors are here, Ms. Samantha Jordan and Mr. John Check, who do an outstanding job with our National Honor Society. Just to note about NHS, it's obviously a national organization that not only requires students to maintain a certain grade point average, but also to adhere to some core values, uh, that make them better people, their community better people, and ultimately their school a better place to be. So really fundamentally, they're at the core of the school culture, and a successful school culture. So there's three that we're going to honor tonight, and I believe they've been wearing a path to the stage all night as well. Our president of NHS, Ricky Shackelford, Ricky? Our vice president, Tyler Atkinson. And our secretary, Joseph Schmidt. As noted, these three have worn a path to the stage, and they'll be very successful later in life because of those core values and because of the work ethic that they have espoused here at Roseville High School. So thank you, gentlemen, for what you've done, thank you for representing RHS in the best possible way. Congratulations. Next is Quiz Bowl, Mr. Brian King, I believe I saw Mr. King here, here's Mr. King.
Yeah, Quiz Bowl, we just finished up today, actually, uh, with Quiz Bowl, we had a okay season this year, uh, we had no seniors on the team, but I had two great leaders. The first one, Phil Longewell, high scorer. Since being freshmen, I knew he was gonna be something special, and he is, and he will be next year. But Phil couldn't be the captain at the beginning of the year, he had other obligations, so I had to call, uh, call on somebody else, Brennan Coles. Now Brennan, I, he, he surprised me, he was this little goofy kid about two years ago, this year, when he was, uh, called into duty, he just became a leader, it was just amazing, and I was so proud, proud of both of these guys, and everyone's coming back next year.
Thank you, Mr. King, great job, guys, congratulations. The next group of honorees is our SAD club, Ms. DeJelowski and Ms. Chef.
Mrs. Chef and I have sponsored this group for many years, and I don't even wanna count. Two of the, uh, young ladies that we're going to, um, bring to you tonight as our leaders have been a driving force, and if you're, first off, if you don't know what SAD stands for, it stands for Students Against Destructive Decisions, and we try to bring an awareness to the students here at Roseville High School about stopping to think before they make some choices, because sometimes consequences are life-lasting. So we would like to, um, honor tonight Elizabeth Martinez. And Unique Robinson. And Unique Robinson. They are a driving force behind everything we do, they make sure we... Our reminders go out for our meetings, always stopping in to make sure there's nothing that they could do to help make the process go faster when we're working on things. We're very fortunate to have them. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, congratulations. Our next group to be honored is REST, Mr. Smitka and Ms. Allen. That would be me. So if I could have, and the REST Club deals with robotics, it's a STEM if you've ever heard the acronym, Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics. REST is part of that umbrella where the kids work on technology and robotics, and they have a great time at it, and they're very successful. Student leader, Jalen Brooks. Student leader, Razul Mahones. Student leader, Evan Martyer. And I don't believe Jason Sedlock is here, but he is the fourth honoree. Jalen, here we go again.
All right, now, REST Club, whew, so much about this club. REST Club actually started last year, and this year, we've grown so much. Actually, we got, what, how many people, Razul?
Around twenty more members.
Around twenty more members. He's so amped up. And sadly, this is my senior year, and I'm so jealous of these guys, like, oh, you're gonna have fun. Yeah, it went from just like something small with just like small little remote-controlled underwater vehicle, which is ROV, simplified, and an RC car that we reverse engineered to perform better in a competition with Square One and all of them. And now we're doing something with autonomous vehicles, and teaching like a little power wheel car how to drive a course on its own, and all these amazing things. And Razul can probably go on with how building the autonomous car goes, and ROV and everything. But yeah, it's just, I'm jealous, 'cause you guys are gonna have a lot of fun in the next coming years, and if you guys wanna say anything else, 'cause I probably just said everything.
Would you like to say anything?
All right, well, yeah. These two over here are seniors, so they won't be here next year, so I guess they look at me like the future, me and Jason. Jason isn't here, of course, today. And I'm very ambitious, I wanna go big or go home, I guess, if you wanna say it. So I guess, yeah.
You got the future of autonomous vehicles right here up on stage, huh? Congratulations, guys, great job. Next is our Roseville Coalition with Ms. Lori Copla.
Good evening. Roseville Community Coalition is a group, we are in the community, and we have community members, Chief Berlin, there's some business owners that are also in, we have lots of kids that we meet once a month in the library, and they do some community service things. The biggest thing that they like to do is they get trained, they get to go out with a police officer, and go to different businesses to make sure that they have the signs that say you can't buy alcohol if you're under twenty-one, and you can't buy cigarettes if you're under eighteen. So that's kind of the point of Roseville Community Coalition, is to get the word out about, they're not against drinking or smoking, they're against underage drinking and smoking. So that's kind of what they do. I just have a couple of them here today. Ricky Shackelford is here. Tiffany Marano, I know is here. I don't think Sierra or Sidney Bowman are here. And Lily Gale, are you here? So a couple of these kids are also in what's called Teens Talking Truth, or T3, and they, we partner with CARE, which is CARE of Southeast Michigan, which is on the corridor of Utica and Masonic, and they are in Teens Talking Truth with the county. So there's kids from every high school in the county, and they do different things. Ricky, do you wanna talk about what you do?
A couple of different things that we do at Teens Talking Truth, like, so a lot of times, we like can make connections with other, like homeless elders and stuff like that, we'll do things that make a difference in the community and the county, we'll also put together presentations, like last year, we did a PSA against, against partying and drinking and stuff like that, underage partying and drinking, and so, yeah, we do.
Thank you.
Next group is our Spanish Club. Ms. Ekinweed could not be with us this evening, so I will announce our members to be honored this evening. Our president of the Spanish Club, Charli Benuski. Our vice president, Gina Bertolinini. Bertolini. That's not good. And our secretary, Rory Flanagan. Congratulations. Do I say a few words about what you do? Okay, sure, sure. I think Rory is gonna say a few words on behalf of the Spanish Club, you've been elected.
Yep. Why not? All right, Spanish Club, we meet after schools every other Tuesday, tomorrow will be our last meeting. We have fun with the language, we do fiestas, which tomorrow will be a festive fiesta, by the way, and pretty much talk about the culture and pretty much have fun with everything within it.
Anybody wanna say anything else?
All righty, that's all, folks.
Thank you, congratulations. Next is our Student Assembly with Ms. Emily Colius. Will come up?
I'm here with my cosponsor. I work with Mr. Madison, Ms. Schmollenberg, and Mr. Lafive with the Student Assembly, and I'll call up the class officers first. Samantha Everett. She's junior class vice president. Miranda Rumfelt is junior class president. And I don't know if the senior class vice president, Alex Martin, is here. Okay, senior class president, Ricky Shackelford. And then Student Assembly officers, Kayla Rogers is our vice president. Brittany Major is our secretary. And our Student Assembly president is Alex Gonzalez. So with Student Assembly, we, our Student Assembly officers are really kind of responsible for running our meetings, making sure all of our year-long projects are taken care of and overseeing those, and our officers this year for Student Assembly have just been amazing. Alex is always on top of things with asking me for the agenda ahead of time, and just really, really organized, and Brittany has just been probably the best secretary we've ever had, too. Our officers have just been great this year, they've made things really enjoyable and fun. And then Ricky is as our senior class president. They have Senior Week coming up, they've organized our boards all year, keeping seniors informed of end-of-the-year activities and getting involved with things like that. And then our junior class officers have the responsibility of overseeing our talent show, as well as prom, which is next week. So they've really, all, both groups, juniors and seniors, have a lot of activities doing at, going on at the end of the year, and they're just, they're just, I can't say enough about this group, we've had just a great time with them, so, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. And cosponsor. Our next group is Symphonic Choir with Mrs. Christina Collins. Mrs. Collins? Oh, she's not here? Okay, all right, I will be Mrs. Collins. All right, we can come up, the president, Rory Flanagan. Rory? Vice president, Jasmine Zarvis. Treasurer, Stefan Bane. Secretary, Samantha Everett. Librarian, Chelsea Bachi. Librarian, Jonathan Hosky. Concert attire coordinator, Brianna Lind. Public relations coordinator, Kailin Kowalski. And public relations coordinator, Kaylee Preston. Congratulations on all of the marvelous performances. Do I take it that Rory is going to be your spokesperson this evening? Very good.
Hi. Symphonic Choir, I don't know where I would be without it, really. I, Trouble Choir is actually a first choir that we start off with, unless you're a guy, you go into Symphonic Choir. I didn't start off in Trouble, I went straight to Symphonic Choir, and I couldn't be more thankful than to have this. It's not only just a class, it's a family, and I'm very proud of us this year, we won a one, straight ones, at Festival, and we got to go to States. Even though we didn't, you know, get a one at States, we still worked our hardest, and we have a lot coming up, but I just don't know where I would be without you guys.
Congratulations to all of you, we appreciate your hard work, thank you. Ms. Copla, did you take care of Teens Talking Truth when you were up here last time? Thank you very much. Last but not least, we have Trouble Choir, and I would be asking Kayla Cook, our president, to come on up. Kayla Cook? Our vice president, Jean Tanika Griffin. Treasurer, Jacqueline Chivers. Secretary, Melissa Taylor. Librarian, Sierra Dishman. Concert attire coordinator, Rachel Hyde. Public relations coordinator, Jenna Smallstake. And concert attire coordinator, Brittany Wade. Okay, ladies, I need somebody to be the spokesperson.
Well, Trouble Choir is mostly like another family, like Symphonic Choir, but it consists of two classes. But when you go into different tris, you meet new people, and you meet new family, and it's pretty cool, at least I think so.
Okay, so I've been in Trouble Choir for four years, every four trimesters, same as Jackie, and we're the seniors, we're Ms. Collins's little kids that's grown up, and without Trouble Choir, there was a lot of things in my life that Ms. Collins is now like a mother to me for, and me and Jackie are kind of close here, but these two are our new babies, and they're gonna take over our little spots, and Trouble Choir, hopefully, will be able to go to Festival with you guys in front.
Thank you, ladies, great job. In closing, I hope we can all acknowledge not only the great things that our students do, but really some of those intangibles that the students mentioned, how meaningful it is for them to be involved in relationships that are not only supportive and positive, but meaningful as well. And I think that's what we're all about, and that's why Roseville High School is such a special place. So kudos to the teachers who have put the work in for these students, and students, kudos to you for the hard work and what you've given back. My thanks, and on behalf of the faculty and the school board, we're proud of everything you've accomplished, thank you.
We always be praised as students, and that usually, they should be praised, but how about your parents stand up and be recognized? How about your parents stand up first? Your grandparents, or aunts, or uncles, or brothers, or sisters, you stand up and be recognized, you kind of... As you see, we have a wonderful staff at Roseville High School, and sometimes we all think that we are very best-kept secrets, so we're trying to let everybody know about Roseville. This really shows it, and with our lift-ups gonna show it, so we wanna thank everybody who created great school, we really appreciate it. Mister, nice that I'll have this on video, I guess on cable in a couple of weeks, I suppose it's kinda busy now with all the concerts and everything that are going on, so be watching for that, and thank you very much, we'll go on to the next, we'll be real quick here, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Common School of Education members, would anybody like to say anything, we'll start with Mr. McCardney.
Well, great job, students, of course, you know, but I like to also recognize the staff, year in, year out, it's the staff, the same leaders leading the same clubs, the same sponsors, and you guys do a great job. Without you, we wouldn't have all these kids that are doing so well, so, good job, thanks.
I'd like to echo the praise to the staff and the teachers who dedicate a lot of time for these clubs, the students who dedicated a lot to, and the parents, and this is one of the fun events of the school year. It's nice to see the leaders and the young adults who will go on to be great assets to the community and the state and everywhere, thank you.
It's a lot of hard work, and it takes a lot of time, and I'd like to congratulate your families.
I'd just like to say, I'm so proud to be a part of Roseville Community School District, and I... District, and I, I wanna thank all of you, the students, the parents, grandparents, and everybody. We love you, and we appreciate all that you do to make Roseville stand out. Thank you.
Once again, thank you to the students, your parents, you know, raising, you know, three kids that went through the community school system here in Roseville. When I, we got involved, as most of the board members did, either starting in parent clubs or, my, my thing was the Booster Club at the high school, and I used to tease the kids all the time, you know, "We're gonna be there, we're gonna be watching you," and, "Oh, please, Dad, don't," and, but you know what? It ended up being the best four, three or four years that the girls had that we were here. And I just, you know, wanna continue to thank you parents for your support, you know, driving them here, picking them up. You don't know what it means to your kids and to us here as board members for your continued support. Mr. Adams, again, thank you for hosting us. Second time we're on the road here, this is getting to be pretty nice, so. Mr. Steele, thank you for your crew for setting up for us. And another, a special event that the city or the school had, Diane Rogers and Teresa Tamala, your Joe Manfreda run that you guys had, was not able to attend, but I heard great things about it, and thank you again for your continued support from the community and the, the students for that as well, again.
Well, I was gonna come up with a couple of things, but Kevin here, he took everything it looks like, so, congratulations, everyone, and congratulations to the parents.
What a great group of kids. They've grown up so much in these four years. They're not like they used to be when they were little, and we certainly appreciate that. I think all of you know how much we love you, and I wanna thank Ricky Shackelford for taking it easy on me in the Joe Manfreda Dream Dash.
Is that any down there, I think, somewhere? There you go.
Congratulations to them.
Congratulations, everybody. It's a pleasure to see everybody up here like this. I graduated from this building back in seventy-seven. I wanted to look at it. It's a beautiful institution for our, and you guys showed, you really do a very proud
You guys have to look forward to getting to be great like him in about forty years.
Those senior leaders that came up here, don't forget about us, right? So, make sure you stay in contact with your teachers and let them know what you're doing and, and in your adult life when you move on. We like to hear those stories and see where you end up. So, don't forget about us, stay in contact, and who knows, Mr. Janey may contact you for our Alumni Corner and our newsletter. So, keep up the good work. It's so nice to see such great students and, and giving us confidence in the future. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, everybody. I think you all have really bright futures ahead of you.
All of you, young men and women, congratulations, of course. You're the leaders of this building. You're the ones that the principals see in their office for good things. You are gonna be the leaders, not only of this building, but you're gonna be the leaders in the community and the state. And as you go through life, say out loud, "I'm a graduate of Roseville, I'm very proud of it." We're very, very proud of you.
On our agenda, we also have a list of our forty recipients of the Roseville Community School Scholarship Foundation scholarships, and we gave forty away of a thousand dollars, and on there is your list of your forty students, and we're very proud to have them on here and to give them that scholarship. Yeah, encourage you next year to come to our, our dinner, it's next year, Miss Rogers, do you know when it is? What is it? February twenty-fifth. We had a full house last year, and there was a waiting list, so we have a wonderful night that night, so we hope you can do that. The golf outing coming up in, in September, so watch for that. Thank you very much. There's also a list of the All-A Average, the All-A Honor Roll, and the A Average Honor Roll, and the Elementary Honor Roll. These are, they attach as also disinformational for you. Congratulations to them as well. Now, this is the first public hearing of this meeting. Is anyone from the public wish to be heard? Probably carrying his clothes, there'll be another one at the end of the meeting. We'll take a short recess, because, you know, some of you have to get home, do homework, yet, finals, and all that, so, we'll take a five-minute recess, and thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it.